I call the meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, just a reminder so everybody, we need to wear masks in schools. So anybody that's not wearing a mask, if you're not speaking, so if you're not at the microphone, we have permitted that, but if you're not speaking, it just has to that you wear a mask. That is the law. That is the law from New Jersey, the governor. It's a mandate. He's got executive privileges.
We keep sanitizing the microphone between speakers. Any hand? Oh, no one? Oh, okay.
There's wipes right there.
Okay. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Rising.
Mr. Shoner.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. There wasn't anybody on the list, so I'm going to close that portion of the meeting and not read the hearing of the citizens for resolutions only, since nobody's on the list. Committee reports. Hello, everybody. And I don't think I said here, so here, sorry. How's everybody doing this evening? Sorry.
Good.
All right. Committee reports?
None.
I think Ms. Miga has something written. Something goes in? Yes.
Hello, everyone here and watching at home. Let me start by saying this: What a great fall for Cedar Grove. Our fall sports across the board have been highly successful and are still going. I mean this from the youth programs all the way through to the high school programs. We have made school history this fall. Individuals have broken records, made personal bests. The Altogether Now musical was excellent. And the support for the students and players involved has been great. I even saw such success of alumni playing in fall sports at collegiate level with big support from Cedar Grove fans. It is great to see, and I wanted to acknowledge it all. Way to go Panthers of all ages. In October, I attended the breast cancer awareness walk, which was held at Panther Park. It was a great night to support a great cause. It was nice to see the community come together to support, I hope I say it right, Minuet's Angels, I think it's called? And we donated, Cedar Grove got around $14,000 worth of donations. I also attended the Recreation Advisory Board meeting on November 3rd. And winter sports, all the information is out. Please check their website if you're interested. There are deadlines to adhere to, so hopefully what you want is still open. Also, mark your calendars, on December 3rd is the 55th Annual Tree Lighting, but this year it's been moved to Community Park. It is not at Town Hall, and it will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I think a special someone will be in attendance there. Also, please remember to support your FSA, your high school APT, your Black and Gold Club, and your Music Matters. These are all for the benefit of your children and functioning solely on volunteers. Membership for Black and Gold Club is due by December 1st. I know volunteering can be challenging, but every little bit helps and matters. I would also like to acknowledge a former teacher from Memorial High School, which what this building was called prior to Cedar Grove High School. Mr. Donald Cairns, he was a very liked teacher up here and taught so many students, and he is known for teaching us how to type, yes, on typewriters. He was also very active in the Key Club, and he encouraged all of his students to get involved, help others, and join the Key Club and other clubs. Mr. Cairns was still involved in the Key Club when I went to a meeting about two years ago, when Ms. Rubino became an officer. It is with a heavy heart that I say, rest in peace, Mr. Cairns, as you certainly made your mark on Cedar Grove. The alumni pages I am on are sharing many stories of what a terrific person you were and how you touched so many lives. And just on a happier note, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope everyone enjoys time with their family and friends. Remember, we have a lot to be thankful for, and kindness goes a long way, especially during the holiday season. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, then we're going to move on. I believe we have a board presentation this evening. Mr. Baer, our high school principal, has a presentation on the Senior Internship Experience. Are we moving?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to, I'm Dustin Baer, I'm the principal at the high school. I want to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Grosso, everybody in attendance, and those of you from home watching tonight. I want to take some time and talk a little bit about a new initiative, a new program at Cedar Grove High School, known as the Senior Internship Experience. I'm really excited about this program. It's something that I have firsthand experience with in other districts, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity and a great experience for our seniors this year and all of our students moving forward, and really a great capstone to their high school experience here at Cedar Grove High School. Hopefully, this isn't the first time you're hearing about the Senior Internship Experience. I did send out a few e-blasts, a few letters to parents, to senior parents, and then again to all of our parents. We held a class meeting, we, you know, we just word of mouth, trying to spread the word a little bit. But back beginning on Friday, October 22nd, I sent an email to all the seniors, and I described what the Senior Internship Experience is. And in that email, after they've read through everything about what this SIE is, I asked them to fill out a brief survey to express their interest in joining this program this year. On Wednesday, November 3rd, I held a senior class meeting right here in the auditorium. We brought all the seniors in. I provided a similar PowerPoint, went step by step, and answered any of the questions that they presented on the survey, and got some great feedback from the students. Also, on November 3rd, I sent an email to all the parents and guardians of senior students. Tuesday, November 9th, we sent an email to all parents throughout the high school, and I'll explain a little bit more why it's important for us to send this to all parents here in just a moment. What you're looking at the screen right now is the results from the senior interest poll that I ran back on November 3rd, October 22nd, I'm sorry, where the seniors filled out the survey. Not all the seniors filled out the survey. I would say somewhere around half of our senior student body filled it out, and as you can see, 91.7% of our senior class expressed interest in enrolling in the Senior Internship Experience this year. So there's definitely some interest from our students, and it's really exciting to see that students wanting to put their skills to work here. So what is the Senior Internship Experience? You know, as my experience through coming up through as a guidance counselor and later a director of guidance and now an administrator, I would say one of the most important things we do here in high school is prepare our students for life after high school. So for many of our students, that's college, four-year, two-year, it's trade schools, it's military, or it's directly into the workforce. Our students have had a phenomenal experience here, growing up in Cedar Grove, coming up the ranks. We have great teachers, they've developed and honed their skills, and put together a great toolkit to go off to life after high school. So the Senior Internship Experience gives students a firsthand look at what real life looks like. Seniors will step outside the comfort of their classroom and step into real-world workplaces. I'll talk about some of the logistics here in a moment, but some of the benefits of this program include on-the-job training, networking, learning what seniors like and don't like about a particular career, and help to determine college courses and college major selection. So many people in the room here, I'm sure, had an internship of experience of their own. I know I did, I had a few, and I learned more, you know, you look at grad school, for instance, you're in grad school for what, two, three years? Many grad schools, you know, programs, you end up with an internship program. Through mine, I learned so much more in that four- or five-month internship program than I did in the other two years in grad school. Just a great experience to put everything you've learned to work. So what are the logistics? How does it work? As I said at the beginning of this presentation, this is going to be somewhat of a capstone experience for our students before they go off to life after high school. So the dates of the Senior Internship Experience are May 16th or June 17th. Beginning May 16th, seniors will stop attending Cedar Grove High School. They won't report here. Instead, they'll report directly to their internship sites. They'll be required to complete 20 to 25 hours per week at their internship site under the supervision of a mentor that they've established and that's been approved through us. Participation in the Senior Internship Experience is voluntary, it's not required. I want to make that very clear. Seniors do not have to participate in that. Our doors are open to our seniors, they can continue coming here, or they can choose to be in the Senior Internship Experience. And internships must be unpaid. So many of our students ask some questions, well, I have a job, can that be my internship? Well, the answer to that is, you can do your internship at your job, but the hours that you submit through the SIE must be unpaid hours. Also, okay, so I'll talk about that more in a moment. All of our students must submit weekly timesheets every Friday. There's going to be a portfolio and evaluation, and upon completion, seniors will earn one credit that will go on their transcript. You know, at that point in your experience, it's not so much about what goes on the transcript because they've already, most of them, if they're going to college, they've done their applications, if they're going to trade schools, but that kind of, it's a capstone experience. They'll put on their transcript, it will always be there, it will never be taken away from them, right? Seniors must establish their own mentor and their own internship site. This is a pilot program we're running this year. It's a growing program. The goal is to develop a long list of internship sites and mentors that we work with every year, but we're just getting started, all right? So I'll talk more about that in a moment. We're going to do everything within our power to help students identify internship sites and mentors, but it really does fall on the students to go out into the community and establish those mentors and internship sites. As of May 13th, senior grades will be frozen for students who participate in this program. So whatever their Genesis calculated final grade is as of May 13th will serve as their final grade in that course, and they'll be exempted from final exams. Where can seniors intern? This, I want to be very clear, this is not an exhaustive list on this screen. This is just some ideas to get the wheels turning a little, ideas to get the wheels turning a little bit. We are, as I said, working to provide a list of potential internships to our students, but I'll say this, what I've learned about Cedar Grove in the time that I've been here is we have some community members doing some great things. We have business owners, we have healthcare workers, we have doctors, we have nurses, we have lawyers, we have electricians and plumbers, and we have people working in the marketing and the business field, community members doing some great things. So we're going to ask students to go out into community and find their mentors, but parents who are listening, we are also asking for help. This is an awesome way for parents, for community members, to get involved with the school, to give back to the community. I know we have a lot of parents who want to be a part of what we do here, and this is a great way, and community members, to get involved and help us, help our students through this mentorship program. Internships must be unpaid, so I want to be clear, I want to keep reiterating that. Mentors cannot be immediate family members. So I know that we have some students who have, whose parents are business owners, awesome. I'm not saying they can't do their internship with those businesses, but the mentors themselves cannot, they cannot serve as mentors if your dad owns a business or your mom owns a business or anything like that. So you'll have to find another mentor within that business, and those hours will have to be unpaid. SIE eligibility. So seniors, we want to make this, this is an inclusive program, right? We want to open this up to as many seniors as we can. Seniors must be in good graduation standing. So what that means is, as of the time they go out, or really through their planning process, they must be in good graduation standing, meaning they have met or are meeting all of their graduation requirements. This includes attendance. Now, I'm going to, every time I get an opportunity, I'm going to reemphasize the importance of attendance. Students cannot go over, cannot exceed the number of allowable absences. So that's 14 in a full-year course, seven in a semester, and four in a quarter course. So keep an eye on attendance when you're talking about graduation requirements. At the time of approval, so students will apply for this program, at the time of approval, they must have a 70 or higher final grade in all of their graduation-required courses. So we're not going to approve a student who has barely hanging on and may fail the course and who needs those last five weeks to get a passing grade. So keep that in mind as you talk to your students about this. We're going to review disciplinary records, right? We have to make sure that the students that we're sending out into our community are going to be a great representation of Cedar Grove High School. And that's going to be on a case-by-case basis, certainly we'll communicate with parents about that. Seniors, again, must establish their own unpaid internship and mentor, and they cannot be immediate family members. Internship sites do not have to be in the Cedar Grove community. There's many of great opportunities in Cedar Grove, but we will open up internship opportunities to our neighboring towns as well. They do have to be in a reasonable driving distance because the administration, our counselors, reserve the right to go out and visit those mentorship, those internship sites and make sure our students are on track, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're showing up, and we need to be able to drive there and get there in a reasonable amount of time. Students will complete 20 to 25 hours of internship per week. They will submit their timesheets each week to their office of school counseling, myself, the administration, and we'll review to make sure that they're on track. Students will be required to complete two to three life-after-high-school senior seminars. So we'll bring all the seniors back in the auditorium, and we have some seminars that we're putting together based around preparing for life after high school. And then there will be a submission of a final portfolio that goes along with a presentation, again, kind of the capstone of that project. Some important dates to remember, don't feel like you have to write these down, we're going to communicate all of these dates, but I just want to put this out there. When we get back from winter break, we're going to kind of really amp up our communicating for this program. But the first deadline that our seniors are going to run into is the final return date for the parent permission forms is going to be March 18th. That's Friday, March 18th. Students are going to have to have identified and establish their mentor and internship by that time. There's forms that the mentor will have to agree and sign off by that date. The last day that our seniors will attend school is going to be May 13th. At that date, grades are frozen. Monday, the 16th, is going to serve as the first day of internship, and then, of course, the 16th through the 17th is going to be all of our internship and senior workshops with timesheets due each Friday. June 17th will be the final day for seniors to submit their portfolios and their evaluation of their internship. The idea with the evaluation is we want our seniors evaluating, we want our mentors evaluating our seniors within their internship site, but we also want our seniors evaluating the internship site so that we can pass on this information to future seniors and, again, expand upon our growing relationships with local businesses. When we put out this survey, these were some of the main questions that popped up from the seniors. Can I still participate in school activities? Yes, they can still participate in clubs, sports, et cetera. The requirement is 20 to 25 hours a week. That's about five hours a day, so they can do their hours in the morning, they can do all of their after-school, you know, jobs or extracurriculars or whatever after school. Can I still attend the Washington DC trip? Yes, the answer is that is yes. We'll work around that. It's a small trip. Can I use my regular job or work-study placement? I spoke about this, yes, but they must be unpaid hours. What if I can't find an internship? We will do our best to help our students, but again, we're asking the community for support and for help. In the communications that I've been sending out, there's a Google form for parents, community members, to fill out if they're interested in being internship sites or mentors. Feel free to pass that on to business owners that you may know of or people that may be interested in helping us or helping the students, but we're looking to grow that list. I did get already some feedback from some parents, business owners, and it's great, and I'd love to grow that. And what happens if the internship doesn't work out? Well, hopefully that's a small number of cases, that'll be a case-by-case, you know, issue. The student will either have to immediately find another internship, or they're going to have to return to school. And again, returning to school is an option. We're here, we're not telling students they can't come back, of course. This is that interest form. I will make this presentation available, I'll e-blast this out, and I'll make sure that you have the interest form. Please, if you're interested in being a mentor, fill out the form, or if you know anybody, again, it could be neighboring towns who may want to help us out and be a part of this program, please feel free to share it. If you have any questions, you can email me directly. All right, that's it. Any questions?
This sounds like the over 50 years that had co-op programs in these colleges, it seems like the same thing, which was successful. Is it just starting for high schools, or do other high schools have these type of programs?
There's surrounding high schools that do this and have great success with it. I have experience in another district that I've worked in that they had great success with it. So it's new for us, but it's not a new, you know, concept.
I had it in my high school, and I'm not going to tell you how many years ago that was, but quite a few. And it was fantastic, it was the same exact thing, and I actually had two friends who ended up getting full-time jobs from their, we called it LEAP, their learning experience something program. So it's, I'm just so thrilled to see this happen.
That's awesome. You know, I've heard so many stories like that from students who later in life, maybe four or five years later, they go away to college, they come back, and, you know, again, the networking piece of it and just being able to have those relationships is awesome.
Thank you. Excited for that.
So am I. Any other questions? Sir?
Any specific criteria for being an mentor, like special field expertise?
Criteria for, I'm sorry?
To become an mentor, like special field expertise?
There's not, it's broad, it's very broad, and what I'm saying to the students is, as we grow our list, ask us questions. If you have concerns, or as a parent, as a student, just come to us and say like, hey, what do you think about this? With this, honestly, that criteria is more in the willingness of the mentors to supervise and to sign off on those forms and to be in communication. You know, it's one more step, it's one more thing in the day and the week that they have to do, but we do require the mentors to be in pretty regular communication with us.
Could it be like a work-from-home type situation where the mentor could possibly be with the student on a, every other week, or every other day or a weekly basis, they train the student and then have the student work from home and do those, like the mentor assigns ones to the student for them to work from home, being as a fact that they can't travel, they want to pass late lines or something like that?
That's a great question. The question was, for anybody who didn't hear that, can this, can there be a work-from-home situation? And, you know, look, we're still, a lot of professionals are still working from home. I think we'd really have to structure that. We'd have to make sure that the student is actually doing the hours. I would want to have a conversation with that mentor and say, look, I understand, you know, how many times a week are you working, what are the tasks? You know, you look at something like, you know, media marketing or something like that, right? A lot of that can be done through websites and social media and things like that. So people aren't necessarily going to offices anymore, but we'd want to be able to document that that student is fulfilling the 20 to 25 hours per week. So yes, I'm open to that, for sure. All right, great, thank you. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, moving on, I think we have the superintendent's update.
Good evening, everybody. So I have, I had the opportunity to actually participate in some very interesting things over the past month or so. I just want to just thank Bobby Bellandi, who is our mental health coordinator, for the organization of the second parent series of our parent workshops in town here. On Tuesday, November 9th, at 7 o'clock here in this auditorium, Bobby introduced Don't Get Vaped In, and it was a, it was a series about vaping and the dangers of vaping. There was, I mean, there was a turnout, probably would have liked to seen a little bit more folks come out to this because it's very, very prevalent within the high school, it's prevalent in the middle school, and believe it or not, it actually starts at the middle school level for our students, at the elementary school levels for our students. But it was a great, it was a great series. Those who did attend, we got some great feedback from that. One of the things I would like to share is, is that one of the things that Ms. Bellandi and I have had conversations about, along with our administrative staff, is what are some ideas that perhaps you would like to see come up in the parent workshops? If you are, if you have an idea, and it's something that you feel strong about, that you would like to really engage the community with, please let Ms. Bellandi know. Her email can be found on the website, on our district website, or you're more than happy to feel free and email me. We will look to put together a series, they are ongoing throughout the entire year. And so far, we've had, like I said, we've had vaping, and we've had teen dating abuse. And that was actually very highly, I don't want to say patronized, what's the word? Attended, thank you, attended workshop. Around 50 or so people come to that, so that was great. I also had the luxury of, last Friday night, I was between the auditorium here and the game going on, the football game going on in the field. It was the Altogether Now concert, the production that took place here. It was phenomenal, and I really want to give a really nice shout-out to Jen Jessen for putting together this production. It was something that was done globally across the world. It was supposed to be done at the same, not the same time, but during the same days throughout the world. It was excellent. It was an excellent showing of our talent, and it was an excellent showing of our community as a whole. So that was, it was beautiful, and I want to just thank all the students that were involved in it, they did a wonderful, wonderful job with that, and I also want to, again, thank Ms. Jessen for that. I started our superintendent series, which was some intimate talks with the community. It was a great opportunity. We started that on November 10th, which is this past week, and we had our first set during the day at the Cedar Grove Public Library, and then we had the nighttime or the evening session that was at North End, yes, it was at North End School. I want to just thank Catherine Wolverton, she is the director over at the library. I want to thank her for allowing us to use her space. The reason why we are utilizing the library is to reduce the amount of traffic and public traffic within our buildings during the day while our kids are in school and in session and our teachers are there. So I do want to thank her for her allowing us to use the space. Through those conversations, I got a chance to meet some really great people. Some people, maybe we've talked on the phone, or maybe we have emailed each other, but meeting each other face-to-face gave just a very different, just a very different feel. It was really, really nice, I had some great, great I had some great, great feedback. We documented that. My goal is to create kind of a Q&amp;A. A lot of it was conversational, but if there are any really specific questions, I want to be able to put that out, and I'll put that up on our website. But most of all, it was a time where we really got together. People shared their ideas, and there's several, several ideas that came out of those talks. And actually, what Mr. Bayer presented tonight, there was some interest in our evening program, which talked a lot about that, which talked a lot about, you know, workplace opportunities. And, you know, I did share that, you know, this was something that Mr. Bayer was going to be presenting tonight, which I have to tell you, I've been a part of this as a principal of a high school. It has been a wonderful, wonderful experience, and I really encourage those of you who have high school seniors to really get involved in this. It's a wonderful opportunity. And Mr. Bayer is so correct when he talks about developing those relationships for the remainder of your life, because there's so many students that I have had that participated in a program like this, that they settled in, and they graduated from college, and then they contacted their mentor, and they were able to get work pretty quickly afterwards. So it's all about networking, and it's all about connections that you make, and the relationships that you make. And I will say, to piggyback on relationships, some of those people I spoke to, a lot of the people I spoke to during that superintendent series, wonderful, wonderful people, great relationships, got some really great eye-opening ideas as well. So I want to thank everybody who attended. We have another session coming up on December 9th, and that will be 10:00 a.m. at the Cedar Grove Public Library. And then on December 9th, I believe it's in the evening, I'll just double-check, I believe it will be 6:30 at South End. So that was fantastic. So I want to just thank everybody for coming out for that. I do want to go and recognize our sports teams, our fall sports teams. This is a phenomenal season. So I want to just talk about the boys' soccer team. They won the NJ SIAA North Two Group One State Sectional Championship. That was the first time ever that that took place. I will share, I was getting updates all throughout the night about the team, and I believe that the status of our boys' team, Waldwick was three and Cedar Grove had zero, but I heard they played a really hard game. So they got extremely far, and they made a tremendous, it was a tremendous feat, it was the first time they ever, they won state sectional champion. So this is a big shout-out to them. Girls' soccer, they were 15-5 this year. They won the SEC Colonial Division. They actually reached the NJ SIAA North Two Group One in the semifinal round. Big deal. Girls' volleyball finished 17-7. They also reached the NJ SIAA North Two Group One semifinal round. Our football team is still going strong. They won the NJ SIAA North Two Group One semifinals, North Two Group One finals. The North Two Group One finals is against Mountain Lakes this Friday. So please come out and support the team. This is, they have had a phenomenal, phenomenal year this year. Very exciting, and have very, very high expectations for these guys. Girls' tennis, they won the SEC Colonial Division, and Tara Smurlia won the Essex County Champion, Group One Sectional Champion, and advanced to the meet of champions across country. That's a huge feat. That's a single feat. So I got to tell you, that was, we've got phenomenal athletes. I always say this, and I don't know if everybody knows these numbers, but 80% of our population here in the high school, they're involved in athletics. It's a big deal. It's a huge number. So kudos to our teams, and we really, we appreciate what they do, and we appreciate our coaches, and we look forward to our winter season as we move forward. Our LRP update, I know I said I was always going to share an update for everybody. I don't have anything catastrophic to share, or anything, you know, different from what I've been sharing with everybody. I do just want to share that, you know, our enrollment has increased over the past seven years, and we're looking at the numbers around 16.5% over those years. We have just finished the surveys. I shared that out last time. I actually shared that also in our, in the district update. And so now, it's basically at the point of where we're going to develop those concept plans of what LRP could look like. So I will definitely keep you up to date, whether it's here at the board meetings, or whether it's through our district updates. I also want to share something else with you. So we actually, we provide COVID testing for our employees, and it's one of the mandates from the state. So if we have unvaccinated staff members, we're able to provide them with COVID testing. It's a requirement. But one of the things we've been getting some feedback about is that our, some of our families have shared that it's been very difficult to have COVID testing for their children, if they needed to do this, whether you go to an urgent care or even your pediatrician. So one of the things you will see coming out later this week is an opportunity to open up to any family. It's voluntary. It's not mandatory to do this. Every Tuesday from 11:30 to 3:00, I know the timing is not the greatest. It's what we're given from the state of New Jersey and the nurses that are provided to us. It's a company called Concentric Bio Labs, and they provide all the testing for, it's just two companies in North Jersey, and this is one of them, and this is who we've been contracted to use. If you feel that you're having difficulties getting your child tested, if that's what you need to do or you want to do, please take advantage of our service. It's here, it's at LRP every Tuesday between the hours of 11:30 and 3:00. Yes, school is happening at that time. But it will detail in the letter. We've talked to the administrators, and if this is something you need to do, this is something you need to do. If you can't get a time or a date with your pediatrician, or even your, like an urgent care. Also, I want to share, if you can't, if you don't want to use the service that we're providing here, Essex County has a ton. I mean, you take five steps down the road, and there's a center somewhere. So you could definitely take advantage of that, but I did want to share that with you, and when you do receive that letter later on this week, that's what that's about. It's, like I said, it's purely voluntary. It's a service that we're opening up to our students and our families to take advantage of. The other pieces I wanted to share, so last time we were together, Mr. Merlino, or one of our attorneys, one of the board's attorneys, had shared out about the two cases that were with administrative law judges. And Mr. Merlino had shared that the one case was dismissed, but there was the other case that was up. So I want to just give you some real feedback I want to share with you, where we are with that. The judgment came by yesterday, and that judgment had stated, they stated several things here, and I wanted just to use this as an opportunity to really speak to the community. It was through Judge Cookson, and that came out of, again, out of the administrative law office. And basically, Judge Cookson ruled that the, this is all about the survey from the survey in June, from the EDAC. And her conclusion, her opinion on this was, was that the survey was not voluntary, and Judge Cookson also said that there were concerns with the use of gender identity, as well as family demographics. So in her conclusion, she had shared that the remedy to this situation was there were no penalties or punishments for this, but rather, she shared that we should discard the surveys and remove them from the district website and from any conversation. So that's exactly what I did. I took them off of the website, and that information is not going to be used any further. But I do, what I do want to share is this, and I want to take this as a clear opportunity. I want to use this as this.
No, it's not public comment.
What I would like to say is, is that, in my opinion, the people have spoken, and I respect that. And so my goal as we move forward is, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do on all different angles, and you've seen some of that as we've sat here through the board meetings and talked about presentations. My goal with this is, is that I will not speak anymore about that survey. To move forward in this community, we have to look at this as an opportunity to learn and grow. I have. I have looked at this as an opportunity to learn and grow. The reality here is, is that our progress, our progress of which we are moving forward with cannot be overshadowed by what we have been talking about for the past several months. If we continue that conversation, we will grow stagnant, and we will not be able to do the work that ultimately, everybody sitting here at home, the staff, and all families and community here in Cedar Grove want for our children, including myself. So with that being said, I took this as an opportunity, and I take this as an opportunity, like I said, to grow, to understand, to move forward, and do the work that needs to be done for the betterment of every single child that steps foot in every one of our school buildings here in Cedar Grove. So that's what I want to share tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on, I need my glasses. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B5?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of October 26th. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of October. B3 is a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of September. B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary report for the month of September. And B5 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B6, please?
So moved. Second.
B6 is a motion to pay the list of bills totaling the amount listed for the time period listed that was in our packet. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B7 through B14?
So moved.
Second.
B7 is a motion to approve the health and safety evaluation of school buildings' checklist for the 21-22 school year. B8 is a motion to authorize the submission of the major amendment to the district long-range facility plan. B9 is a motion to authorize submission of plans required documentation for new boilers at Leonard Park School. B10 is a motion to approve the school's safety and security plan for the 21-22 school year. B11 is a motion to approve the application for the use of the Cedar Grove facilities with sophisticated production and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. B12 is a motion to approve the application for the use of Cedar Grove facilities with three cheers, dance, and fitness. B13 is a motion to approve the application for use of Cedar Grove facilities with CMG Dance Project. And B14 is a motion to approve the application for use of Cedar Grove facilities with all-out dance competition. Any discussion?
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, Ms. Miga.
So these, the dance, the three dance applications, that's the same as always, right? Like, I know we didn't have it last year, but it's like those dance.
Right. They rent out the facilities, exactly.
Companies that come in and they rent it out, and whatever. If COVID is still an issue, are they responsible, or is there fees built in that will pay for the cleaning?
DeVita, do you want to answer that question, please?
Yeah, they still have to buy the COVID rules. So, you know, if, you know, everybody has to wear masks and all that.
Right, okay.
And then we have a built-in fee for our custodians to clean afterwards.
The same way any sporting event, or productions, or anything would have to do, right?
Yes, we charge them for the custodian fees for an extra amount of time after the event ends.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, let me a second, S13?
So moved.
Second.
S1, second reading, be resolved that the board hereby affirms the superintendent's decision in HIB investigation involving student ID listed for reasons set forth in the superintendent's report to the board, and directs the board secretary/school business administrator to transmit a copy of the board's decision to the affected student's parents forewith, confirmed non-HIB. S2 is a motion to approve submission of the 2021-22 school self-assessment HIB grades. S3 is a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials. S4 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S5 is a motion to rescind motion S13 on October 26th agenda and retroactively approve Veronica Galambos as the high school yearbook business advisor stipend from 11/9/2021 through the end of June. S6 is a motion to approve Casey Tinstan, Memorial Middle School English teacher, at the rate listed. S7 is a motion to retroactively approve the following high school STEM/STEAM design corps to instruct an extra class for the time period at the stipend listed. S8 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S9 is a motion to approve Carrie DeTono as substitute teacher at the rate listed. S10 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S11 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S12 is a motion to approve the following winter coaches for the 2021-22 school year. And S13 is a motion to approve the following spring coaches for the 21-22 school year. Any discussion?
No.
No.
I just wanted to ask about the blue ribbon ceremony, and you forgot to comment on that. And just explain a little bit about how that went, and how wonderful it was.
I totally forgot, and I also wanted to share something else, too, about something that's on the agenda. So I had, thank you very much, Adoli. I had the opportunity over teachers' convention to actually join Tracy Dyer, the principal of North End, and Kristen Masato, third grade teacher down in Washington, DC, along with over 1,000 other members of 45 different states. It was, it was a two-day gathering and celebration of blue ribbon schools, and it was a phenomenal time where we had the opportunity to meet so many great people and learn, actually, some very interesting, some interesting interventions, techniques. We were able to network with people that were very close to us here and that were across the world. I thought it was very, very interesting to meet the representatives from Hawaii. They were dressed in their lays, and they shared what they, what they've encountered in their issues in education, and how they were able to overcome some of those obstacles, and how they were able to move that one particular school forward in their districts as a whole. So it was great. And we all, it culminated with the receiving of the plaque as, we didn't get the flag because they didn't have the flags ready, but that's supposed to be delivered to us to display on our flagpole. But the deputy secretary of education actually spoke very, very eloquently and really addressed a lot of the issues that are going on in public education as a whole. But it was great. And I just want to just thank the staff over at North End, as well as the families at North End. When you sit in a forum like that, and you see the hundreds of schools that were being represented, and the work, and the energy, and the effort from all ends, and you are part of that, I have to tell you something, I'm very proud to be part of that here. And so that was really, really, such a great, great experience. And thank you for, I'm sorry, I forgot, you know, to mention that, because that was a great, great experience. It wasn't a great experience driving home. It took hours to get through all the traffic, but it was really great. The other thing I just want to say also, before you continue, is that I know that we had some approvals of substitutes. I did want to mention this as well, is that Cedar Grove is no different than other school districts across the state, as well as across the country. We are in a shortage of a lot of things, but especially our substitutes, bus drivers, and substitute custodians. We put out an advertisement to the community, to our families, and we've gotten a lot of response, believe it or not, which is really great. And so I always look at it as, what better way to help serve our community than to employ our community as well? But we still need more folks. So if you, please spread the word, please talk about this among your-- So, if you, please spread the word, please talk about this among your, your circle of friends, and if you could even do one day as a substitute, that's better than, than what we already currently have. So, again, substitutes for class, substitute custodians, and then even substitute bus drivers as well. Thank you. Bye.
All right. Any further discussion on any of those things?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Ponderia.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. At this time, the Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Cedar Grove public schools. In this section, we allow public comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 40 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes. There will be a countdown timer, and at the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be shut off, and the speaker will be interrupted. Speakers may speak only more than, speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a reasonable response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. This portion of the meeting is meant to hear the public comment, not to have a dialogue between the board and the person speaking. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students, district employees, and members of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. The public is reminded that students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable, for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. All statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to speak to identify themselves by name, address, and group affiliation, if applicable, every time you address the board, and to limit their comments to items directly related to the operation of the school district. The first person I have on the list is Patricia Montana. Mr. DeVita, you got the clock?
Yep.
Is this on? Patricia Montana, 5 Emory Court. First, let me say, I had a prepared speech because I was not expecting that Superintendent Grosso would inform the public about the recent ruling by Judge Cookson. And in the past, as recent as the last Board of Ed meeting, we have not been provided with complete, accurate information, and in fact, it continues this evening, because Superintendent Grosso's explanation of Judge Cookson's ruling was incomplete. And in order for us to grow as a community, we need to acknowledge wrongdoing. In order for us to grow as a community, we need to accurately summarize the events of a judge's ruling. Parents in this district were forced to bring illegal action against the superintendent and against this board because they issued surveys to our children as young as nine years old.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but we just lost our quorum, so I need to end the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.